Welcome, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that this event is being recorded and will be shared online. In fact, we've already started the recording process. A couple pieces of Zoom etiquette before we get started and kick off our event. If you are not speaking, if you could please turn off your video. And as a security feature, we've also automatically muted people as they came into the room today. And we will have to unmute people manually when it's their time to talk. Your continued participation after you've been informed that this is being recorded implies that you've given me your consent. Thank you. My name is Yoshiko Grace Matsui, and I'd like to welcome you all to the Des Moines City Council Candidate Forum 2021. This event's purpose and goals are to give the public and the voters the opportunity to get to know our candidates for positions one, three, five, and seven. This forum was originally scheduled to occur in person, but due to concerns about the ongoing COVID pandemic, it was moved to an online format. So thank you very much for joining us and finding out about the event. Jamie Quinn Wagner will be acting as the forum admin and will be timing candidate responses for us today. I have the opportunity and privilege of being the moderator for this event. Both Jamie and I are community volunteers who were approached by organizers from previous candidate forums to produce this event. So that is how it came about. Let's talk a little bit about the format. Tonight's format, there'll be a two-minute introduction from each one of our participating candidates, followed by several questions that'll range in topics. There'll be time afterwards for questions and answers, questions and answers that are directed by the audience. And those of you here are welcome to use the chat function to message Jamie Quinn Wagner with all of those questions. We'll try and get through as many as we can during that timeframe. I'm going to remind our candidates that you all have signed an agreement upon some guidelines that we had established prior to this event. And that includes things like the moderator is going to ask the questions and I will direct who will be answering them. Candidates will answer the question to focus on their own ideas, voting record, or opinions. And you've agreed to discuss issues that are relevant to Des Moines and not necessarily compare yourself or attack another candidate. Thank you very much. Let's get started. We'll begin with a two-minute introductions, and I am going down in position order here. So for two minutes, and I'm gonna wait to make sure that Jamie's got our clock displayed for us. There we go. The first one up is Harry Steinmetz. If you could please introduce yourself and tell the audience what qualities you would bring to the Des Moines City Council. You have two minutes.
Sure. I'm Harry Steinmetz. I've lived in Des Moines about 24 years. And I'm an attorney. I've been practicing law since 1989. And now I am an administrative law judge. I've been a prosecutor, both county and city, and I've been a criminal defense attorney. So I understand how the criminal process works and what's effective and what's not effective in that. I think the qualities that I bring that are going to add to the council are I have a fairly sharp mind. It tends to be legalistic, not unsurprising, given my background. But I'm looking for those criteria. I'm looking for particular things that can cut away from a lot of the emotionalism and get right to the heart of the issue. The second thing that I've learned over a number of years is that in order to be an effective legislating body, what you really need to do is find the common ground and work from that point forward. I know many of the people on the council pretty well. I share some views with almost everyone on the council, but not all of them. We're all different people. We all have different points of view. But if we focus on what we have in common and what we want to accomplish for the city of Des Moines, I think that that process will allow us to work together in order to create a much more effective city council. And so those are the qualities that I really want to bring to the council and make the council work as a much more effective body. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna go ahead and move on to position three. Jean Oxiger, you have two minutes to introduce yourself and tell the audience what qualities you will bring to Des Moines City Council.
Hello.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. My name is Jean Oxiger, and I'm running for position three on the Des Moines City Council. I lived in Redondo for 45 years, and I've been active in the community for most of that time. I spent 14 years as president of the Redondo Community Club. I led the Woodmont-Redondo Annexation to Des Moines 25 years ago. I was president of my newspaper union. I led the campaign to save the Mount Rainier Pool and did the same two years later to save the Tuculo Pool. I spent 26, six and a half years as a journalist at the Seattle PI before it went online only. And coming out of college, I had to go back to high school for some additional education. And I became then an adjunct professor of journalism at the college. A little later, I became president of the Des Moines Legacy Foundation. I'm still a commissioner with the Des Moines Pool Metropolitan Park District, and I'm working to provide swim lessons, free swim lessons for all four-year-olds. And generally, if there's a civic event in Des Moines, I probably do the graphics for it. I think the qualities that I bring to the position basically comes from my career as a journalist, and that's the ability to ask questions. And not only ask questions, but then to, you know, seek, you know, answers. And of course, that means you have to, you have to be civil in that pursuit and, you know, work with people in order to get the information that you need. So that's what I hope to bring to the council.
Thank you. Again, we're going in position order. So next would be Priscilla Vargas, position three. If you could please introduce yourself and tell the audience what qualities you will bring to the Des Moines City Council.
Well, good evening. Thanks for having this forum. I really appreciate it. My name is Priscilla Vargas, and I'm running for city of Des Moines, position three. And what I bring to, what I would bring to the city council regarding my qualities is that I actually, one of the things that I really feel is important is being a good listener. So certainly asking questions, as Jean had indicated, but also being a good listener. I am someone that believes in working together as a team, whether it's on a city council, whether it's, you know, in any kind of environment where there's, there's a need to make decisions and work together proactively. That is what I shine in being able to accomplish. I am also a firm believer in respect, treating people with respect. So that is something that I try and do every day. I have a degree in environmental studies and planning. I always wanted to go to college, and I went to college, and it took me a while with two kids. But I am a firm believer in learning, learning, learning as much as you can. And through the opportunity that I've had with my public sector experience, and especially in the transportation arena, I've been able to, again, get a lot of things accomplished that help people in the community, to help people get where they need to go as it relates to transportation. But even more than that, it's, it's bringing people together for some common goals that everyone has to make a difference. And I believe that that's what I can bring to the city council is that it's a community effort. It's not just for one person or a certain group. It's for the entire community. And that's what I would like to bring to the council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, we're walking down the position list here. So next up, I'm going to ask for Tad Doviac in position five, candidate for position five. If you could please introduce yourself and tell the audience what qualities you will bring to the Des Moines City Council. You have two minutes for your response.
Hi, I'm Tad Doviac. I started out in my community getting involved as a block watch captain. I've been doing that for about 10 years. Audio is good still? Okay, good. And I got involved with the Woodmont Rehab Facility, anti-Woodmont Rehab Facility about five years ago, five or six years ago, when that was getting involved, when that was trying to be put in and met a lot of people in the community, found that I had a talent for helping people out with that kind of thing. And consequently, I've been really involved with my community over the, over the years. I like to help people anyway. I've been an IT guy for 20 years, both just helping out and as a manager and director over the years. So I like problem solving. I like fixing things. In the, over the last, again, over the last 10 years or so, I've, every election that comes around, somebody says, hey, are you gonna run? Hey, are you gonna run? And so this year, I said yes. I, I decided that now is a pretty decent time to kind of throw my hat in the ring and talk about the important issues that are facing our community. And I hope that my problem-solving skill, my problem-solving skills, my ability to, to talk to people and listen and hear multiple sides of issues will help, help the community even more. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Tracy Buxton. You again have two minutes to introduce yourself and tell the audience what qualities you would bring to Des Moines City Council.
Okay, thank you. Hi, thanks for showing up and coming out tonight to hear us. So my name is Tracy Buxton, and I'm running for position five on the Des Moines City Council. And what can I bring to the table? I, I feel like I bring basically three core values to the table created from listening to my neighbors around the community. So I will work hard to create a safe, green destination community. And here's what I mean by those three things. Safety, without safety, you don't have a city. And really, a city, the only two things that need, that you need when you start a city is, well, three, a city clerk, an attorney, and a sheriff. And so about safety, I've, I've been available to listen and advocate on behalf of our citizens with the police and staff to help create safety. I've listened and advocated for our police with staff and even legislators in regard to constraints or things that would be helpful to our police. And as a result, changes have been made in neighborhoods, lest there's some legislation moving forward. We've added to both our police force and our mental health support system. And as a result, our police guild has endorsed me. In regard to green, what does that mean? Well, without sustainability, our quality of life suffers. And so I've been an active support of our urban forestry plan, working with Forterra and definitely boots-on-the-ground participation all over town in different parks. Anytime there's a park cleanup, I've been there, you know, with my actually boots, rubber boots, pulling weeds and planting trees. So, and I'm also an active advocate for our urban forestry fund here in the city and promoted responsible support for clean water and air. Wow, five seconds. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you very much. And with us today, Matt Mahoney in position seven. Just for those of you who may be joining us a little bit later, our other candidate in position seven was unable to join us today. But Matt, you have two minutes. If you could please introduce yourself and tell the audience what qualities you will bring to the Des Moines City Council.
Thank you, Yoshiko. Thank you, guys, for having me tonight. I'm Matt Mahoney. I'm your deputy mayor currently in position seven. I have always prided myself on serving my community. I'm a US Army veteran. I was a volunteer firefighter at the Crystal Mountain, and I became a fire commissioner up there. And I've loved to volunteer in various aspects of this, of any city or community being. It's been a, been an interesting ride. You learn a lot about serving your community. Things I would say, I'm very accessible. I'm willing to listen and hear and discuss and debate, spend time to educate about the issues, and also hear about what others' opinions are. So I think I bring that. I have an extensive business background, budgeting, management, so forth. About 35 years through various jobs. Currently, I'm a buyer at Nordstrom, and I've been there about 22 years. I also pride myself, I'm a passionate person. I dive, and so I'm very familiar with the water round here. I'm a connector. I've brought many people, including some of the ones attending, into, connected with other organizations and so forth, so they fulfilled their dreams. So I like to bring certain groups or individuals to their passion, so they can be part of the community too. So I bring that as a quality. I'm a, I'm a high-energy. I love to do what needs to be done. An example was I became a chair of the parade because we weren't exactly getting help to do that, and I stepped in. And it's, it's nice because I love when we see our whole community celebrate together. I, I love, I love what I do, and I know I want to do it for a season, and then I want to give it to somebody else. So thank you.
Thank you. So those concludes our introductions from our candidates. We have some questions that were put together in a couple of different ways we're gonna move on to next. Those of you who have followed this event through its different iterations know that we received some help getting this off the ground from former candidate forum organizers and also got a bank of questions submitted to us as well. And from that, Jamie and I worked on some questions to get us started in this conversation. So for this set of questions, I'm going to ask you to limit your response to about 60 seconds. So Jamie will need to reset that clock for you. And we'll, can I go ahead and head back in reverse order of where we just started? And so we'll start with Mr. Mahoney first as soon as Jamie gets us set up. All right. And this question will be the same for everyone. "In the heated national and local political discourse in the last few years, it's really taken an antagonistic tone that's created a deep-seated division in our society. How will you work with your colleagues, the city council members, towards consensus building and fostering positive working relationships?"
Yes, we have a very divided country, and it translates all the way down to the city. It's not easy, and I don't pretend it is. I try to work with everybody as best I can. I try to listen and understand their points of view. I'm not gonna say I'm not guilty of being a part of it. I think we all are in some way or other. I think it's admitting that we all need to take a step back and understand each other's perspective. And we all need to look at the other's point of view when we can, but also stand our ground. But I'm trying to do my best to be as civil as I possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, working back up the list, I have Tracy Buxton. If you could, let me know if you need me to repeat the question.
No, Yoshiko, I'm fine. Thank you. What, what do I do to bring cohesiveness, continue to include everybody? Well, I do include everybody, not always out in front of everybody, like on Facebook or out in public. But I have a pretty longstanding, continued commitment to make phone calls, get input from every single member, even if it's difficult or even if there's tension in our relationship, we know. I've had, I would say, within the last two weeks, I have had at least a phone call with at least every single council member. So I think they all know, even if we don't appreciate each other's opinions, I will still check in and have conversations and see if I can gather information. And then I do, every once in a while, put in my two cents to try and bring cohesion, but thank you.
Thank you. Tad, your response is next. Please let me know if you would like me to repeat the question.
I think I'm fine with just responding. My career in IT, I work with everybody from all walks of life. I've worked with recently homeless individuals all the way up to executives and everyone in between from all walks of life, from all political backgrounds. And while my views or my opinions may not mesh with the person that I'm working with, I have to find a way to work with them every time, every day. And so I have a lot of experience just working with a diverse group of people and working on the city council. We are all, everybody on the council is trying to work toward making the city a better place. And if we can all row together and kind of communicate, that would be my goal, is to all be rowing the same direction as efficiently as we can.
Thank you. Going in our backwards order here, I have Priscilla Vargas as the next respondent.
Thank you. I, I really believe in listening to what other people have to say. And certainly, being on the council, I would, I'd be, you know, open-armed to that. I'm a firm believer in consensus building, and certainly compromise is a big, I think, component to what we need to do in order to get from where we're at now to a better place within not only our city, but the state, throughout the whole country with the challenges that we've been facing. So certainly, I would, I would want to have conversation. I would want to be able to sit back and listen to what other points of views are and not necessarily be making up my mind right away without getting that input and that feedback to, you know, really consider where everyone's coming from. So that's, that's the way in which I would think is a good approach to trying to do a better job in making decisions.
Thank you. All right, we will move along to Jean. Jean, if you could please let me know if you'd like me to repeat the question.
No, I think I'm fine. Ready? Okay, I also believe in consensus building, but I think that there's a feeling in the community that, you know, there's a, there's a distance between the council and the decision-making process there and the community's ability to have a say and input. And so one of the things I would really like to do is find a way to reach out and gather public opinion to guide the council and what is the best process. And I think that, you know, a council informed with, you know, what the mood of the community is, would have a, you know, much easier task at coming to, you know, a good decision. But also too, I think within the council, you know, the ability of each member to ask questions and to get answers is paramount. So those are the things that I would, you know, be looking for.
Thank you. Matt Mahoney? Oh, no, Harry, I'm sorry. My fault. That's the right order. Let me make sure we can get your sound. Thank you.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is really kind of a specialty area of mine because I've worked in a lot of very high-conflict environments and being able to accomplish things because of my ability to work with other people and to include them and make feel, and to encourage corroboration. I've been a trial lawyer. I'm now a judge. For a long time, I represented the long-term care providers and helped rewrite the entire boarding home, which would be known as assisted living, waxed in this state. Some of the things I really would like to see in this city is, first of all, I'd like to see there an effort be made to have citizens committees or that could give us input on things. For example, everybody talks about downtown, but what is it that the downtown business owners really want to see there? I think we need to form an environment where they can get back on that. And I'd like to see the council itself have some stability rules that we govern their meetings.
Thank you. I appreciate your response. So we've run through all of the responses to question, that first question. Let's move on. And Harry, we're gonna start with you and go back down the list. Let me read you the text of the question. "It's estimated that the city of Des Moines will soon be a majority-minority city. According to US Census data, the top three racial and ethnic groups are 51.3% white, non-Hispanic, 19.9% Hispanic-Latino, and 11.6% Asian. How do the changes in our community's demographics inform your policies?"
Well, I think that the the demographics themselves are not necessarily the driver of policy. Because in order to get to a policy that's based upon a demographic, you'd have to make some assumptions about that demographic, which may or may not be true. Fact is, I think that it is economics and income that really should drive the policies to a much greater level than just simply a person's skin color. That being said, I do think that there are cultural differences that need to be taken care of and need to be brought into the community so that everybody understands some of those differences. I have reached out to a number of communities and tried to get their input. And I've interacted with a number of communities when I was a coach, when I was doing things in the community and when I worked on the Woodmont Rehab Center issue.
Thank you. Okay. Jean, please let me know if you would like me to repeat the question.
Hi, I really, I really appreciate this question because it's one of the things that I have been working on ever since I started as the commissioner with the pool district. When we started with the pool, it was primarily being used by white people. And over the years, we've tried to work to see what we could do to diversify the clientele of the pool. And I think we've had a lot of success because we have looked at and recognized the problems. We have recognized, you know, what some of the impediments are for various people participating. And, you know, we've been able to, you know, make substantial gains at the pool. So I bring that perspective. But also, working at the college, our college is one of the most diverse educational institutions, and it focuses greatly on diversity and promoting inclusion.
Thank you. Okay. Priscilla Vargas. Let me make sure the audio is working there. Please let me know if you'd like me to repeat the question.
And I'd like to say it's really not so much about demographics as it is equal opportunity. The city of Des Moines would need to provide outreach to the entire community so they, they know what's available to them in the way of growth and opportunities. Everyone should have the ability to, for instance, run for city council. That is something that they, they so desire to do. And so this is, this is really, I think, important to stress. And I'll also say that through my efforts running for city council, I have also been endorsed by the diversity and inclusion Democrats. So it's certainly something that I'm a firm believer in, and I, and I think there, there should be opportunity for all people in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Going in order again, we're going to move on to Tad Doviac.
Yeah, I'll ask you to repeat the question.
Absolutely. "It's estimated that the city of Des Moines will soon be a major..." It's estimated that the city of Des Moines will soon be a majority minority city. According to the US Census data, the top three racial and ethnic groups are 51.3% white, non Hispanic. 19.9% Hispanic Latino and 11.6% Asian. How do the changes in our community's demographics inform your policies?
So my. Kids go to schools that are already majority minority. And so it's even, it's even more diverse as you get younger in our schools. And that. Listening is really good. And that helps a lot. When you don't understand the culture that somebody else is coming from. Asking questions and, and really listening to the answers are a great way to help. Get information that you need to help make policies. I also find that. Across cultures, really, everybody wants to make a living, go home to their family. And just, you know, kind of live their life, have fun with their family and, and make their lives better for themselves. And that's really a universal trait.
Thank you. Making sure I'm in the right order here. Well, next we'll move on to Tracy.
Thanks, Yushiko. I think I'm already unmuted, correct? It looks like it.
Yes.
All right. Well, great question, and I actually asked myself that question a few weeks ago. So I sat down to think about how equity work has driven policy in Des Moines. And I came up with some great things. So just starting with Midway Park, it's a BIPOC rich community. We've worked hard to expand that, spent, worked hard to get grants that quite a bit up there. We've created community gardens, partnered with, to create a soccer program and revitalize that park. Taking action, we declared racism as a public health crisis, created a Juneteenth holiday in our city. In regard to education, I've attended several racial equity justice series put on by SCA. Deputy Mayor Mahoney and I met with master builders to talk about zoning issues. We've talked a lot about policing already, economic development, the facilitation of 350 beautiful affordable housing units. And some of the best views and transit access in the city. I could keep going. Thanks.
Thank you, yes. Okay. And rounding out that question, Matt Mahoney.
Thank you, Yushiko. I have a saying, I believe in celebrating our differences rather than pointing them out. And we need, we, we need to continue and add community events and. Those types of situations where everybody is invited and all included. I can point to a couple of particular ones. The parade is one of my favorite events. When you see six or 7,000 people of all mixes, ways, diversities, colors, whatever it might be. And they're all enjoying the same thing and being able to feature their culture and others celebrate it. Those are fantastic. The Fourth of July is another one that I'm really fond of. Because you have a bunch of people, they're not red, brown, black or white or yellow or whatever it might be. What they are is red, white and blue. They're celebrating the US, it's, and it's Independence Day. So you see the beauty, finding other ways that we can, you know, connect the community is what I'm after. What they are is I'm open to hear ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to another question, we're going to go again in the order that we just went through. We're going to start with Matt and go backwards through that order again. The city saw a high number of violent crimes in the month of September, including a deadly shooting at the La Familia Sports Pub and Lounge. How do you propose reducing crime in all of our neighborhoods?
This is more than a minute question, but I'm going to try to go fast I can. We have a couple of situations that are really tough. First of all, with COVID. Where our career criminal, there's only 40% capacity at the school jail, for example. We have King County that the prosecutors downgrading felonies to misdemeanors and. We have some state legislation that's, that's also been a little problematic. So the problem is we have a lot of career criminals more than we've ever had. So the only way to do it is deter it as best you can. That's with more police and I support that. Also trying to engage some of our youth in other activities and so forth. It's going to be tough. It's a reality that. That, that crime is going to be prevalent until we can figure this out and until we can find state and county federal. Assistance to maybe help some of the folks with drug issues, mental issues and what we do with, with criminals themselves. So it's not easy thing.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Tracy Buxton. Okay.
Thank you, Yushiko. I think the deputy mayor just did a great job in talking a lot about the law enforcement approach. I would say another whole facet of reducing crime is the heart issue, the soul issue. It's the same with homelessness, you know, you, you, you've got to house a soul, not just a body. And we, in order to address crime, it's addressing the souls. And so that's where I think the behavioral health and mental health component comes in. So I think we can just, we are doing a good job addressing mental and behavioral health in our city through our allocation of resource. And I think we just need to keep looking at it, keep evaluating these agencies that we support. And how they are reaching out to every facet of our mental health aspects in our community. I think that's a huge bucket to pour into to make sure that their resources for these people who want to. Rehabilitate or come out of a life of crime. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is our candidate, other candidate for position five, Tad Doviac.
I, last year during the shutdown, I, in my capacity as a block watch captain and as a community kind of activist. I bought and distributed to the community a bunch of blocking mailboxes. If you've seen me on Facebook anywhere, you probably see my name associated with Mail Boss Mailbox. I get nothing from them. I sell the mailboxes at cost and I install them for free if you need help with it. Mail theft is one of many criminal issues that we deal with here. I believe in the broken window theorem that if you let little things go, big things tend to follow. And so I looked for ways to mitigate that with the mailbox boxes. I'm also very invested in the, the mental health workers that we're bringing on to help our law enforcement. And just help people with those issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Please let me know if you would like me to repeat any of that question, but we'll move on to Priscilla Vargas.
Okay, thank you. Great question. Public safety is my number one priority. I'm working, I've been working with the police chief and I have been advocating with the city manager for additional resources. I know that there's two additional police officers that are coming on board. But what I think is really important is listening to the community where the violence is occurring within those communities. To, to, you know, really gather the input and, and the, just what is happening and what people are feeling and seeing. So that there can be a reallocation of resources where, where necessary. And, and that's, I think, what is most important is, again, listening, having, getting, getting out there, having that outreach. Finding out from others in the community that are most affected. And developing ways in which to allocate, reallocate resources. As Matt said, there are a lot of limitations now that we're experiencing and. That we just don't have the opportunity to do things the way we used to. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, let me know if you would like me to repeat the question.
No, I think I'm okay. It is a good question and we are a small city and quite frankly, our police need help. And one of the ways to do that is have good citizen involvement. And so that's, you know, one of the things I want to do is, is encourage people to become involved with the city. And they, you know, in effect, become the eyes and ears of, you know, the police department. That being said, I think it's really important that our police department reflect the diversity of the city. You know, my understanding is that there was some problem with the La Familia shooting that no one wanted to talk to the police. And so, you know, it, it works much better if you've got, you know, a police force that, that actually reflects the demographics of the city. Another big problem is juvenile crime and I'd really like to see us, you know, restore the parks and rec programming. So that the kids are, you know, being supervised. Sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate your response. And the final response for that question will go to Harry.
All right, I'm going to try to move very quickly because I don't think there's ever been a candidate for city council that has more experience dealing. With the criminal justice system than I have. I've spent nearly 30 years as an attorney and primarily that was involved in criminal law, either as a prosecutor, as a defense attorney. I've been a member of the Pierce County Criminal Justice Task Force. I have participated in the joint legislative task force on domestic violence. And I helped with the Pierce County Superior Court Reform Initiative that brought down a huge backlog in cases. The one thing I know that there are no one solution to crime, there's nothing that you can do and say, this will reduce it. Some of the things that you got to do with first grader patrols, the more presence of the police, the less crime is going to be committed, at least on the streets. Two, you've got to have the alternative courts out there that help people get to reform that they need. And. Then you also need to encourage, at least in our city, other coordination with other police departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to stay with you. Harry Steyman's a candidate for position number one. In our next question. Speaking of public safety, the Federal Way Mirror reported that nearly 20% of the members in South King County Fire and Rescue. Haven't confirmed their compliance with the COVID-19 mandate for firefighters and healthcare workers. Failure to comply after the October 18th deadline. Might lead to lower staffing levels and waiting times for EMS calls in Des Moines. What is your stance on the governor's vaccine mandate and how can we ensure there isn't a disruption responding to 911 or EMS service?
Well, I support the mandate. I think it's necessary. I mean, frankly, I can't understand why anybody who regularly interacts with the public wouldn't want to get vaccinated. We've all been vaccinated for other, other crime or other illnesses. And as a consequence of that, nothing bad has happened. I think this is, it's taken a medical issue and turned it into a political one and that's truly unfortunate. I think that if in fact, people don't get vaccinated and they are in that group. Then people are, we're going to have to pay more and recruit much more harder to get people in. I might be willing to entertain a small, a small tax increase. Of some kind to increase the revenue that can come in so we can pay a recruitment bonus to get those positions filled. It's going to stretch those first responders tremendously to, to respond to everything and that's really.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next up for that same question, and please let me know if you would like me to repeat it, is Jean Oxinger.
Yes, it's a good question. It is unfortunate that this has become such political football. You know, back in the day when they had the, the polio vaccination, people were rushing to get it. Because, you know, public health was, was very much. It was, it was, everybody wanted public health to be as safe as possible, so. We all need to get vaccinated. I agree with the governor's mandate. And. It's, it's going to be tough getting through this. I, I don't have any solutions. I'm willing to listen to, to them. But we may well have to go through a rough period. I, I would note that as the deadlines approach. More and more people are getting vaccinated, so. It's a case of, you know, trying to find out, you know, what it is that's going to take to get everybody vaccinated and. We'll have to deal with it when it comes.
Thank you. Priscilla Vargas also in position three.
Thank you. I, like my colleagues that have already spoken, I am also in support of the governor's mandate. I believe that vaccination is the only way that we're going to get out of this. Pandemic and the pandemic is just something that is being treated more on a political level versus a science or scientific level. And it's really for the greater good that we have everyone, especially these frontline folks that are in. Fire, lease, EMT, healthcare, et cetera, vaccinated so that we can get into a better place. We need to get past this pandemic in order to actually. Try and have some normalcy. So I am certainly a firm believer in it and. I, I think that it's, it's just going to help us get past what kinds of things that we've been dealing with in the last 18 months.
Thank you. The same question for you, Tad Doviac.
I am going to maybe take a different position than other people. While I am not against people getting vaccinated, I think that people should get vaccinated. I'm vaccinated myself. But the mandate, I think, is a one-size-fits-all solution that. There are a number of people in our community that that solution doesn't fit for them, for whatever reason. I don't know why certain people, members of our fire department have decided not to get vaccinated. I haven't talked to them about it personally. So I don't know what their reasons are, whether they be medical, religious or other reasons. And because we live in such a strange time, it's a paradigm shift. And so there are people in all walks of life that are finding that they may not get to continue in the careers that they have chosen. Because of their vaccination status and they need to, we are going to have to deal with that.
Thank you. Tracy Buxton, the same question goes to you.
Thank you. Well, I think I'm going to answer the question a little bit backwards in regard to what to do about it to begin with. Because it's not just our firefighters, it's our firefighters, our state patrol, our law enforcement in every municipality and jurisdiction. It's our healthcare workers, it's our hospital workers, it's our nurses, it's our utility workers, it's our city of Seattle, SPU. It's, so it's our infrastructure is taxed, our military is taxed. And so when you talk about if it were just the firefighters, you could maybe try and look to EMTs or look to nurses. Or look to, you know, I think one state is looking to the National Guard, but every single sector is losing a large proportion. Of workforce. And so that's why I am very nervous about this mandate at this time. So thank you.
And the question goes to you, Matt Mahoney.
I support it. I support it because of the science. I believe it's in the high 90s that hospitalizations are unvaccinated people and the death rate is in the high 90s for those unvaccinated. We owe it to each other to protect each other with the vaccination. While there might be some rules, health issues or something like that, that might prevent some people. In this case, with how much every one of those, those police or firemen are engaged with citizens around the community. We need to protect and ensure everybody's safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to give you all an update, we have one more question before a closing minute that you'll have to. Respond to audience members and then we'll go to a Q and A. For those of you who are watching in our room here, you can use the chat functionality to let Jamie Quinn Wagner know that you have a question. That you would like to have some of our candidates answer. So two more questions and then we'll get to that. Again, starting with you, Matt, working our way back to the list. Can we start with this one? Let's see here. What is your understanding of the environmental and public health dangers from the Sea-Tac Airport overflight operations? And what is your view on the proposed airport expansion?
Another, another question with only a minute to explain. I have a pretty good understanding. I have a pretty good understanding. I attend all the meetings. I understand the the ultra fine particulate, the noise effects that happen to us all in our sleep deprivation. I understand the impacts for our children, everything else, and it's, it's serious. It's something where alternatives or alternate fuels can mediate it a little bit, maybe possibly in the future, electric. But it's a long ways down the road. A second airport might help us. As far as the expansion, I think that we're trying to pour two five gallon buckets of water in a five gallon bucket. Because back in ninety seven, the legislators didn't cite a second airport, where now the impacts are here. Growing the airport in any capacity, when there's needs to be better solutions, and I think like paint field's a good answer, and I ran out of time. Sorry.
It's quite okay. It is. It is a short timeframe. Apologize for that. Moving backwards through our list, Tracy Buxton, please, let's make sure we have your audio. You're welcome to start. Let me know if you'd like me to repeat the question.
I think I have it. Thank you. Health hazards, absolutely. Between the fuels and, you know, air quality, which bleeds down into water quality, which and the noise is a health hazard. So absolutely, I think that our legislators, both nationally and state, are working on some of that, and it's sometimes a little futile. They're doing studies, working on filters, looking at mitigation, sound mitigation. So there's work going forward. I believe in regional, state, and federal power to make these things happen. In regard to the expansion, it I, with Councilmember Mahoney, way too much on way too small of a footprint, and the problem is now even expanding to another, creating another international airport. You've already got urban areas around any consideration, so you're going to have mitigation problems again. So deep problems. Thanks.
Absolutely. Sorry, I raised my hand a little bit early for you there. Apologize for that. Ted Doviac, if you could answer that question, let me know if you'd like me to repeat it.
I'm good. Thank you. The airport has changed a lot. They're trying to jam a lot more into the same space. One of the issues we have in our region is we are constrained geographically between Puget Sound and the mountains. Trying to move good services and people is difficult and putting another, there's just no real good place to put another airport in the area. I mean, you'd have to put one, I think, south of Olympia to really make an impact, and then you'd have urban growth down in that area. You know, the the best thing we can do is, you know, try and work with the port, try and mitigate things as much as we can and look for solutions, yeah, regionally, and bring in federal money to to help mitigate that and keep the economy going because the airport really does help drive the economy. But it's really difficult. I live right in the flight path. The airplane just went right over my house. I could hear it. So thanks.
That same question goes to Priscilla Vargas. Please let me know if you would like me to repeat any of it.
No, that's fine. Thank, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for the question. In fact, I was on a Zoom call for the Aviation Town Hall before our forum this evening. I really did not want to miss that, and I thought it was very interesting. Adam Smith and Karen Kaiser and Tina Awal, along with a lot of good questions that came in. This is a, this is a tough one. There are a lot of scientific capabilities to mitigate noise and air quality impacts. They're just taking some time, but the bottom line is, is that what my understanding is, is that there really, really needs to be more of a voice by the community. The community is has sounded off concerns over the years, especially with third runway, and we're not heard. There needs to be that voice. And and without that voice, things aren't going to change anytime soon. It's still going to take a while.
Thank you. Jean Oxinger, would you like me to repeat any of that or?
I think I can go.
Thank you.
I think that, you know, we had recently had the Seattle County Health Department study on ultrafine particulate matters in the area. And, you know, the, the results that they got were just incredible. I mean, you know, our kids, basically, if they live under the flight path, you know, they're almost a year behind in their studies because of the the impact. Life expectancy is greatly reduced for people that are living there. And so we, we really need to press the port. And, you know, everybody involved with this to to really understand, you know, the impact we're having on people. There's got to be medic, med, excuse me, mitigation. And another thing that we're doing right now is we're talking about, you know, expansion. We're expanding freight flights. I mean, it's getting worse, just the footprint we've got.
Thank you. And finally, for that question, we have Harry Steinmetz.
There are just tremendous health impacts that have been pretty well documented around the airport. We have cancer clusters in the area at a much higher level than areas that are further away from the airport. We have the fine particulate study that was just done that Jean Oxinger just referenced that truly shows the part of what we're breathing in is damaging not only the adults, but the kids in particular. And there are sleep and noise issues that contribute to a much lesser amount of health in the in the neighborhood. And what we need to do is we need to mitigate. We need to get a hold of everything that we can. We need to talk to the airport and get them to slow down, see if we can, if there's anything that we can do to help push the cargo that's coming into a different place. And then that becomes a statewide problem, and how do you deal with that cargo? But nonetheless, we need to stay engaged with the airport and get mitigation where we can.
Thank you. Okay, candidates, you can take a breath. Kind of shake some of that off for a second. In a moment, we're going to go through the line one more time, and you'll have a chance for a one minute closing statement. And what I would love for you to address in that closing statement is, what is your first priority that you would like to address as a council member, and why should folks entrust their vote to you? And again, we have about a minute each for that. And we'll go right through the line. So Harry, you'll be up first.
All right. Well, I think my first priority is to make sure that the council becomes a much better functioning council so that we can address things together and find the consensus that helps the city move ahead. I think that's the most important thing that we need to do. Part of that's reaching out to the community and bringing them in. Part of that is making sure that our meetings are run in a way that encourages people to find that cooperation. They, the basic things that I want to do as a councilman are make sure we have safe neighborhoods, a vibrant downtown, that we have sustainable budgets, clean parks and open spaces that are safe for everyone, transparency on the council, and a well-trained and professional police department. These are the things that I think are really important to our community. And it's why I hope they will entrust me with the vote on the council. So I hope to ask, ask, I ask completely for your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move down to Jean Oxinger.
Well, my first priority, I think, is is we have to restore our Parks and Rec program to be an active program rather than a passive one. You know, the the programs that that are put on there, you know, support our education system. They make it possible for, you know, our our parents to be able to work and and be confident that their kids are being supervised and you know, looked after in the the critical hours when school ends and six P M. When most parents get home, that these are the the time periods when kids get in trouble. We have to, you know, and and there's a difference, of course, between an active park system with these programs as opposed to a passive park system. And you know, it's just essential that we, you know, restore what we were in two thousand, or I mean, twenty eighteen. Sorry.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to Priscilla Vargas.
Thanks for the question. My first priority would be really to, there are council members that I do know on council currently, but it will be a different slate potentially to an extent, and there's members that I don't know, existing members I don't know. So I would certainly want to be able to to get to know the council members and understand where they are coming from as a council member for the community. And I also believe that working together is is really at the forefront so that we can be as much a consensus building type of a council than one that's not functioning in that manner. What I believe in for me as to why you would want to vote for me is, again, public safety, economic development, especially the Marina, and revitalization of downtown. And those are the kinds of things that I I am wanting to bring to the council as a member. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. In your final minute, if you could let us know, Tad Doviac, your first priority you'll address as a council member and why folks should entrust their vote to you.
I'm going to focus on public safety. That's what I've been doing, again, as a block watch captain for ten plus years, working with the, you know, trying to get mailboxes out to help people out. It doesn't matter if you develop things economically, if you fix parts and everything, if you don't feel safe going to use those things, if you don't feel safe going shopping, if you don't feel safe going to a park, if you don't feel safe walking your dog around the block or walking your kids in your stroller, you, then what's the point, right? So that's why, you know, we hear public safety, public safety, public safety, but that includes, you know, talking to the people in the communities about what, what's going to make you feel safe? How do we work together to to bring that safety to that, you know, our small communities, our neighborhoods? And my one economic development thing that I would really like to see happen is downtown cohesive signage. And I brought a proposal to the city council a couple of years ago about that, and if I'm on the city council, I would definitely work to move that forward and help, help that in the downtown area. I see the clock stopped. I'll go ahead and.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
User error.
Okay. Tracy Buxton.
Thank you. So I would say the one, the one core value that I did not be, was not able to address in my opening statement is creating a destination community that has to do with economic development. I think that components for the other two core values, safety and sustainability, there are enough components in place for the other core values to be successful if enough effort is put forward. But in regard to creating a destination community and strong, sustainable economic development in our city, there are still, the train still needs to be put on the tracks, and I feel very jealous about making sure that we get to kind of an autopilot stage with moving our downtown corner Marina forward to to create an environment that attracts development and building, small business, large business. I think that is super important. Those, those components are not in place. So that's going to be a strong emphasis for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on for the response to our final question, programmed question, Matt Mahoney.
Thank you, Yushiko. Waterfront development, both in Marina and Redondo. It's one, it brings people to it. It's a great place for us all to enjoy and give them, give them great things to do there with businesses and restaurants and other things. It also makes our downtown more attractive for development. I'm really tired of downtown looking like nineteen sixty two. And it's, we have to break the cycle. If we do the Marina in particular, we're going to incentivize developers and investors and business owners to put their investments in our town, and that's going to change the town. And it's going to be something that will spread across. Now, we want to keep the small town bill when you do that, but it's important. The other one is public safety. Crime's up, and we need to ensure our citizens are safe. They don't need to be worried about their catalytic converter getting killed or getting stolen or murders happening and those types of things. And then inclusion of everybody in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your willingness and participation in the, in the forum today. We're going to move on to some questions that are coming in from the audience members. And we can see that there are at least one question here about the airport coming in from an audience member, and this can be for anyone. So whoever would like to tackle this. How can the community and citizens organize to mitigate the airport expansion? Like, what way can they get, how could they get involved? Are there forums, efforts that are already underway? I saw Harry's hand first, so we'll go there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, there, there's a great neighborhood group called Puget Sound, Quiet Skies Puget Sound. I used to be pretty involved in that a few years ago. And, you know, they have organized in such a way and contacted our officials and engaged in a dialogue that is actually making some progress with that. So you can be supportive of Quiet Skies Puget Sound, but also participate in the event to show that there is this sense of community at large that really wants to see something change about that. And I think that's the best thing that we can do. I'm not aware of any other particular groups, but there are, you know, you can just write letters to the port saying, hey, this is too much. The more that particularly the port commissioners hear from their constituents, because they're elected people too. You know, the better off you're going to be. And then the third thing is Representative Gregerson from this area had a bill last time that didn't make it through that would have divided the port into districts. And as a consequence of that, they would have been representing, you would have had somebody who was your representative on the port not elected from the county at large. That would give you a much better voice to do that. So those are three things that I think people can do at different levels in order to mitigate or push for mitigation from the airport.
I appreciate your response. But Matt, I saw your hand up. Did you want to add to that?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Yushiko. Harry covered most of it. The only things I would add is that speaking to your state senators and representatives and your U S representatives, a lot of this is at the FAA or the state level that some true change can occur. But Quiet Squad, Quiet Skies and as an organization has been fantastic in doing that and getting behind them is a good thing.
Okay, I think I saw Priscilla raise her hand first, and then I'll go to Tracy.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, again, what Harry said and Matt was was really important to share. And again, I can't, I can't agree more that state and federal, state and or federal legislation is what's going to be required to stop the expansion. So that is something that, again, there, there, there are these port commissioners that need to hear from everyone. They, 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 they definitely need to hear your voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy.
So just a little small part to add. It can get a little bit tedious, but you can on a regular basis, go onto the port website and view their agendas and see what kinds of things the commissioners are voting on. And you can give public comment at a port commission meeting the same way you can at a council meeting. So it's not even, it's, you could write, but you can also get a little bit more involved if you want, and then invite your friends to join you. I mean, some of our community members were absolutely incredible activists there for a while, though it can burn you out a little bit to be an activist. I mean, but, you know, those people are a wealth of information like Steve and Sheila. And so if somebody were to want to take something like that on and become educated, there's a lot of information on the port website. You can find out what their. there's a lot of information on the port website. You can find out what they're voting on and what they're doing and working on.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Tad, would you like to, to add to that?
I'm just going to chime in and say, read a lot about what's going on. Like Tracy just said, go and go on the website and find out what the issues are on the agenda and write emails, write lots of emails, copy and paste and send them every week if you have to. If you, depending on how strongly you feel about it. But the more you, the more you use your voice, the, if, they're not going to hear you if you don't speak. So you just have, you have to get involved and just, you know, and you can do it from, you know, home, behind the keyboard if you really want to. Thanks.
Also see an electronic hand raised by Gene Oxer.
I think we have, you know, probably our best opportunity right now to have an effect on, you know, what's going on. We talk about going to state legislators. We talk about, you know, all these people. We're electing port commissioners right now. They will be on the ballot this November. And I, you know, I firmly believe that people tend to just kind of, you know, glaze over when they, you know, see the, the port positions that are up and it's, you know, however people choose. I don't think they're investing a lot of time in, you know, really realizing who it is we're electing. So I would encourage everybody, go to, you know, the, your various sources of information and study up on who's running, you know, running and support the people that are going to support, support, you know, straightening things out here. I mean, it's direct control, you know, over what's going on. If the commission doesn't want this, you know, these problems to be happening, they do something about it. So let's get people that can make a difference.
Thank you. Moving on to another question we've had come through in the chat box here. What do these candidates propose to do about historic preservation of our architectural landmarks in general and the Des Moines Masonic Home specifically? Tracy.
Hi, in regard to the one specifically, I apologize that as a city council member, I'm not allowed to speak to that. But in regard to other historical buildings, it depends. So a lot depends if they are historical, if we want to work to make them historical. Everything that belongs to somebody is private property until it belongs to the government. So that's a really complicated question. And like I said, in the council member, in the council meeting this last week, it depends on what history you want to preserve. So some, some decisions to forms of history are at odds and you have to weigh them.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to, I'm sorry, I lost the order. So we'll go to Gene Oxinger and then Harry, I see you next.
Okay, there are, you know, various projects in town. One of the most controversial right now is the Van Gasken House. I think the public was generally led to believe that the city was going to try and preserve that property. And then somehow in the process, it went south. We still have work to do in the beach park. We have not restored Sun Home Lodge. You know, there's people do appreciate, you know, history. And it is, it is a driver for economic development. When it comes to the Masonic Home, we need to be in contact with the people, you know, that have recently purchased it, have as much input as we possibly can as far as, you know, trying to get as much of it, you know, preserved as possible. And don't stop fighting because we've had, what, three or four different purchases of that property fall through. It may fall through again, and that's a huge chunk of property that we might even be looking at the city is, you know, investing in, you know, getting that property. So it's, don't stop fighting.
Thank you. Going to move back to Harry Steinmetz. I saw your hand up.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that in general, historical preservation is just a great idea because it gives you that sense of where you're coming from. You know, and it all depends on quite, sometimes just right where you want to draw that line. For example, the Van Gasken property, it was a fairly nondescript house. It doesn't have a lot of historical value in terms of teaching people about importance of particular pieces of property. But on that property are Native American remains that are older than the house. And now we have to deal with the tribes on that. And that truly becomes, I think, the historical preservation issue for that particular piece of property. In dealing with the Masonic Home, it's, boy, it's a tough one. It would cost an enormous amount of money for the city to try to get involved in that. And frankly, we don't have the budget for it. However, hope springs eternal that there will be some kind of a public-private partnership, that there may be somebody else that comes in, that there are lots of reasons. I think there's a, at least a sense that the person or the company that purchased that has not done anything other than to renew the demolition permit. And it's a demolition permit that ultimately gives them some leverage in their negotiations. So I think that the negotiation has to continue. I think we need to keep pushing with the Historical Society and the Historical Preservation Trust, see if we can bring in some other larger entities that might have the funds to make it a much more interesting and perhaps successful negotiation.
Thank you. Were there anyone else? Was there anyone else who'd like to address that specific? Okay, Matt?
Like Councilmember Buxton said, I can't comment on the Masonic Retirement Home at this juncture, but I will say this. There is a balance that always has to be done between what the cost of something is. And I can tell you, preservation is very costly. So you have to pick what, what you do. It's, it's a very difficult decision on all our parts. I agree with Gene. The, the beach park is one that we've been begging to do, but finding the grant money and the funding has been tough and it takes time. And this is just one of the challenges as we try to go through these buildings because the truth is we can't afford it ourselves. People will say we can, but that's not true. You have to find outside sourcing to do it, and there's only so much available. Most of the funding is for open spaces and not preservation. Now, if you can find private public partnerships and things like that, and somebody's willing to play, you definitely want to entertain them. But there is a cost issue. I just want people to understand. So, you know, there's things where the heart says one thing and the mind says another. This is the quagmire we all face when we're dealing with these properties.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like I'm going to go back to our chat box and see if we have some more questions here. What do you plan to do to increase transparency in our city government? Go ahead, Harry.
I seem to be jumping ahead with a, a lot of these, and I certainly don't mean to be hogging the spotlight. But, you know, what we need is, is for people to feel like they have the opportunity to participate in the decision-making process. I know one of the things that was very frustrating, and this happened to my mother when she came down to talk about the decision to end senior services and as, as a city entity and contract that out to Wesley Homes. And here we were, she was prepared to say that she got up and set her peace. And it soon became apparent that the decision was already, was going to be voted on that night, meaning that the decision had already been made. I think that's a source of frustration for a lot of people in Des Moines. And I'd like to see something that at least allows a one week, one week lag time so that we have our first reading and the comments on that, and then you have second reading, and then you actually vote on it so that there is enough time to get people's input on this. Second thing is that I think we need to have regular community meetings throughout the city. There was a Redondo, some of the condos down in Redondo, you know, had everybody come to a candidate's forum, participating on Zoom just like this. And, you know, they peppered us with lots of questions about what were we going to do about the cars and the noise and everything that's happening down at Redondo, which has been an ongoing problem. I think that was a great interaction with, with people in the city. I would like to see more of that done. I don't know whether that's a city function to try to put those together or just something the city can encourage, but we need somebody in the neighborhood to pick up the ball and run with it. North Hill is sort of an interesting place because they have this community center where we can have these kinds of meetings. Hopefully, when things open back up, we can return. There's a, the Saltwater Unitarian Church down here. Perhaps some of Evergreen Lutheran would be willing to own us some space. But we need to figure out where the spaces are that we can use them simply to have people come in and have a dialogue with their elected officials.
Thank you. And I saw that Gene Oxinger, you were next to want to respond to this question.
Harry, I liked some of your comments, but I think it absolutely is the city's responsibility to reach out and try and figure out what people want. The, the situation right now is people, I'm hearing it from North Hill down to Redondo everywhere. It's just like people are feeling shut out of the process. And, you know, it's, it's not a question of simply saying we're open to hearing decisions. We have to go out and seek them. And, you know, rather than, you know, simply waiting for organic, you know, committees or, or, you know, groups to come up, let's formalize it. We used to have a Citizens Advisory Committee. It hasn't met since two thousand seventeen. We used to have regular reports from the city manager, weekly, monthly, quarterly. The cities around us all have that. We don't have that. And it's important to be written because, you know, you, I, I know that as, when I sit in a pool commission meeting, if something is introduced for the first time on the screen and you don't have the opportunity to really study what's going on and make comparisons, do any research or anything, it's, it's not only difficult, it's insulting. And I think that's part of what's happening around the city is people are feeling insulted because too many decisions are being made and they're not given an opportunity to, to participate. And one other thing is I, I really think we, we've lost a lot of the ways that we used to interconnect. We could interconnect through the newspaper or, you know, something like that. It's so important now that we use the city's website as a communications device and to push information out that people can use and also be a resource for people to be able to do their own research. You go to the city website right now and it's abysmal. You can't find anything. So, you know, I think, I think the city, and it's one of the things I want to do as, as a council member is, you know, the council and the city government itself should be reaching out to the people, not expecting the people to come to them.
Thank you. I think Priscilla Vargas, you were next.
Yes, thank you. A lot of good comments here, a lot of good information. I'm a firm believer in that there needs to be more robust dissemination of information in public forums. It would be really critical, I think, to, to get more feedback from the community. Definitely being honest and open is, is really up there, high on the list and transparent. The, the public should be able to, to know what's going on and know how to get that information. And whether you're interested in, in what's happening at the city council for a particular meeting or you want to, you want to know what's happening with respect to activities, all those things should be available for people to be able to, to learn what's happening in the community. And the opportunity right now is all virtual, which can be good and bad. Depends on whether or not the individual is able to, you know, actually get on a Zoom meeting to watch city council during their meetings. The website is certainly something that I think, like so many, at all different levels, whether it's city, different agencies, websites go through these evolutions of updating. And certainly the city is, is in that situation. And I certainly think that there's a lot of good things that are coming around the bend with the website, but there's, there's work to be done so that people can actually find information and be more educated. I'm a firm believer in all of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Tad, I think I saw you raise your hand. Would you like to take that on? Okay, this is about transparency and how you would increase transparency in government. For those of the, those of you who have just joined us.
I think the, the things that I would want to focus on are, one, like Gene said, the website is really difficult to navigate. We really need to get that so that it's, it's easier to find what you're looking for. And I use the search function on there and I get all kinds of irrelevant results. And so I, I'm not sure how we can fix that, but we really need to, you know, get the staff to, to get, make that a priority and make it easier for people to see or to find information there. The other thing is the community meetings. I helped facilitate a state of the city meeting down here in the Woodmont area a couple of years ago before COVID. That was really well attended and the people who were there really appreciated it. They appreciated having accessibility to the mayor, to the chief of police. And I've been to some state of the city meetings that the chief has put on as well. In the pre-COVID days, we could do that. And that connection, that personal connection where you can sit face-to-face with our community leaders and raise your hand, ask questions without being constrained by, you know, Zoom, being muted and all that kind of stuff. And just being more personal with people. I think we need more of those. We need more, we need the, and like Gene said, the community advisory committee really needs to be made more of a priority with the city so that we have citizens who sit on that committee can bring the neighborhood issues to the city so that they, so those of us who, who might be on the council would be aware of, of those that you wouldn't otherwise find out about. So that, those are the things that I would focus on.
Thank you. Matt, if you would like to address that one?
Thank you, Yoshiko. Well, I'm going to be the, the guy in the glass house because I own the accountability and the, what I'll call more of an appearance of lack of transparency. It's very tough, particularly COVID has made it extremely difficult. I attended all of the state of the cities and it was a great venue for us to communicate to the public. I was, I was one of the first members of the Citizens Advisory Committee and it was, it was a good thing. But only a few of the members really were a conduit from the neighborhoods. So it'd have to be changed a little bit, but being somebody in that particular committee and saw where the opportunities were, I definitely think that should be reinstituted as, as getting a, but it has to be a pipeline both ways. Also, there is no town newspaper anymore. There's multiple Facebook pages and not often is, not, not all the time is the information correct. And it's the damage control and trying to do something. Mark Twain said something, it's easier to fool people than it is to convince them they've been fooled. And that's always difficult when you're trying to pass on information when misinformation's been out there. And there's so many ways that can be done. And is it somebody's fault or isn't it? I don't know. I'm not going to get into that, but it's very difficult. I believe in the public forums when you can have them. Again, COVID has made it extremely difficult. And the one I champion the best, and I think both Councilmember Buxton and myself excel in, is being out and being accessible and talking to people on a regular basis. We'll talk to anybody. We have that reputation. We answer our calls. We answer our emails. We'll have the face-to-face and sometimes it's not fun, but you got to do it. Transparency will be always something that other people want more of, but they, I don't think, one thing I've learned on council, it's harder to, harder to meet everybody's expectation of transparency than it is. meet everybody's expectation of transparency than it is. I'm not saying I'm perfect and I can always get better and we can always get better, but it is just what that is. Thank you.
Sure thing. I did have something come through here about, um, Quiet Skies. It says here that many folks, uh, of the candidates here spoke up in support of Quiet Skies. But, um, the city no longer has a formal relationship with them in negotiating with the port. What is your plan to see if our city manager, Michael Mathias, will have them return to work for us? Matt?
I'll go out. I've always been a proponent that especially key represented from the community, give a, give an open door to advocate. I'm not saying it's the best condition right now and under circumstances, but what I will say is that I definitely commit to trying to, to, to open that door, to make sure it stays open. You know, the biggest thing is, is, um, that it's tough in some regards. People have different opinions about the best way to do things, but we need to make sure that all voices are heard. So maybe anybody only gets seventy percent of what they ask for, but, but at least their voices are heard.
Thank you. Uh, I see, I see that Harry's got his hand up there.
Yes, I do. I tried not to go first this time. Um, I, I don't recall that Quiet Skies was, uh, in a formal relationship with the city. There were some people who were, uh, well, uh, Steve Edmiston and Sheila Brush or Bush uh, have been active in Quiet Skies and also, um, were appointed by the city to participate in some, uh, of the things. I think a part of the problem is that then that really blurred the line between what the advocacy, advocacy group was saying and what was the position of the city. Now, a lot of times it was aligned and that's fine. But on those times that it's not aligned, that creates some problems. And so I think that that, uh, is one of the issues. Uh, I think that Quiet Skies needs to be invited to participate. I think anything that we can do to encourage them is great, but I don't know that they need to have a formal relationship, uh, with the city in order to be an effective group, nor does the city need to have a formal relationship with Quiet Skies in order to find those areas that we have in common, uh, and advocate for them together. They just need some communication.
Thank you. And I see, uh, Priscilla's next to respond to that question. Sorry about that. Okay.
Okay, uh, I just wanted, uh, this is one of those examples where there's a lot for me to, you know, to learn and understand about the Quiet Skies. Um, and folks that are really, uh, proponents, advocates for Quiet Skies and the relationship that was there with the city potentially, uh, a while back. I don't, I don't have a lot of details. So, uh, certainly I would, I would love to learn more, um, and, and be sort of like a, you know, a, a, a faucet and take it all in. It's really what I wanted to say. I don't wanna, uh, spout off anything more than that, but just to say there, there's certainly a lot to learn from all of the, of the parties. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we had Tracy, who was up next there about this question.
So, I, I had my hand up a few different times over the last few minutes. Uh, so oh, no worries. You know, you got a hard job there, Yoshiko, so I'm not, I'm not criticizing. Just wanna make sure. So I'm going back a few questions. I think just in regard to the overall transparency. Personally, I'm, you know, short of wearing, you know, Saran Wrap around town, I'm pretty transparent. You ask me a question, I'm pretty candid. I think most of the people that I've spoken with know that. So when it comes to some of these, uh, some of these other things in regard to, oh, and alls I can say is about solutions to some of these last few questions, I'm just, I'm taking notes. And I'm gonna have to go to some, a brainstorming table, eh, eh, to work on some of these. I don't have good answers for all of these. And in regard to the Quiet Skies, it's very similar. I thought, you know, Harry did a great job, some, summing that up. Matt did a great job. I don't have a strong opinion and I need to know more details before I could even come to the table saying, well, this is what I think happened. And this is a good solution. I'm not educated enough. I would need to have some pretty, um, pretty deep conversations with a few people. So, uh, that's where I'm at on that. I, but I'm taking notes. So, that's what I do too. Thank you for, uh, thanks for listening.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Were there any of the other questions that you wanted to address now, Tracy? I'm sorry, I overlooked your hand.
Okay, so, no, I mostly just wanted to say, I personally feel like I'm transparent. I'm taking notes. I'm becoming more transparent. I'm listening to community ideas right now. I honestly, if I get reelected, I have a list of things that I would like to bring to the table with one other person, three other people, five other people. Not saying that my whole list, it's a list of, of things I've collected from community members, from colleagues, from, you know, things that I think are important and, uh, a new year and, uh, an ongoing council is a good time to bring some things to the table again, maybe. So that's what I'm doing and that's what I'm doing tonight, actually, taking notes. So, thanks.
Thank you. And feel free to like wave your hand if I, if I miss you. Okay, thank you. Jean Oxner, you had your hand up, uh, for this response as well.
Yes. One of the things I've noticed when I've been outdoor belling is that there is a, there is a wealth of knowledge in this community that I think would be extremely beneficial to the operation of the city if people felt that, you know, it was worth it to get involved. Because, you know, this goes back to the transparency issue is, and, and I think just the attitude on, with regard to, you know, information that people can provide. Again, I think that it's incumbent upon us to, you know, reach out and pull, you know, the collective wisdom of the, the city into the conversation. And, uh, that means being open and welcoming and, you know, too many people are not feeling, uh, welcomed right now.
On the heels of that, that actually leads well into my next question that came through the chat. We've had community members report incidents, uh, recently, this, as this summer, uh, that were racially charged. And as a, uh, uh, city council member, how would you propose, um, condemning racism? Speaking out, addressing those types of issues in our community? And what can you do in your position, were you to be elected or reelected to city council? I saw Tracy's hand first and, and Jean, let me know if you would be next. I think your hand was raised after that. Thank you.
Well, sometimes as a city council member, it's hard to become, uh, well, I'll say this first. I generally, generally do not think that activists make good council members because they have a very focused voice. And I think council members need to be able to stretch their ears to hear all voices and be a good representative of the whole community at once. Okay, so all that to say, I think that, uh, some of these issues really do take activism to make a change. It's very difficult when we are, our job is to create and sustain policy. And, and to hear our community. So we can take policy, but sometimes it's difficult to, to engage in a fight. So, uh, you've gotta step gently and that's what I did this summer. Stepped very gently as I could while supporting a core value that is, uh, something I've learned. Uh, it's not that I am not a racist, but I'm working to be anti-racist. And I, alls I can do is say, I'm, I have, I, I cannot come down with two feet and say that anymore. I've grown up as a white blonde woman, for heaven's sakes. So, um, so I'm working it and I think that all of us, I mean, I, I watched all the stuff that Amazon recommended, right? And I've read books and I'm, I'm working the issues. So all of, I, I can't speak for all my colleagues, but I think we're working as these issues, the, um, the best we can while also maintaining a proper stand as a council member in a city that has businesses and government and, and, you know, contracts and things. So, uh, I think that's about all I can say about that right now. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Tad, I saw you raise your hand unless Jean, you were waiting for that question.
Okay. Uh, actually, as an activist, I think I, you know, have a perspective on the difficulty it is in getting heard. And so, you know, I don't think it's a question of bringing a particular, uh, agenda or anything to the council with what I'm advocating. It's just that I'm advocating that we have a system in which people can be heard. And, you know, whether that's the formation of, uh, community, uh, community groups across the, the, uh, city. And I'm not talking just, uh, geographical, I'm talking non-geographical. We should be hearing from the black community. We should be hearing from the Latinx community, the Asian community. The LBGTQIA plus community. I think what, what, you know, I think I would advocate with the council is, is that give people the opportunity to be heard. It's amazing what we can do when you just, you know, get, you know, have the feeling that you're being heard. Because then you can start coming together and figuring out what the best course of action is. But if you're shut out, you're gonna get nowhere.
Thank you. Let's move, Tad. Um, sorry, your, Jean's hand came up before yours. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem. The city declared racism, uh, an emergency. And so that kind of informs the cities, uh, but, uh, what they do on the city side. We, the city can't, um, discriminate. It's, that's the law. And so, we, we need to follow that on the city, the city council, um, as that should inform our policies. But practically speaking, in the community, we can do more cultural events. We could have parades for different communities in Des Moines. Seattle has a few that they do, uh, each year. We could pick some different ones that we could do, uh, in our community. We could have, we're getting to the point like we, we discussed in one of the other questions, that there is gonna be no majority in Des Moines i- in the near future. So, um, all the communities, uh, the ethnic communities, uh, that, uh, wanna participate and maybe have a parade or some other event, uh, in our community. That's a great opportunity to bring people, not just in our community together, but from around the entire region. We can have, uh, festivals. Um, we have the Blues and Brews, uh, at the, uh, beach park down there. That's a great place to do other little festivals and things like that. So, I mean, if you wanna do some, I mean, I'm not gonna try and name every community because I might forget somebody. I don't wanna offend anybody. So, but we have a lot of did, we have a lot of different groups and immunity that could, we could something on down there, working with the Legacy Foundation, working with the Rotary Club, uh, working with, uh, other bigger regional, uh, groups to bring those kinds of events to Des Moines. And, uh, and really bring it, make it the destination city that it really needs to be.
Thank you. Harry, I think you had your hand up for the response to this question as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, um, i- i- it seems to me it's begging the question of there are two restaurants in Des Moines that have people associated with them, uh, who, uh, are advocating or acting in a way that is terribly racist and is totally unacceptable to the vast majority of people in this town. Uh, I think that, uh, they have been roundly condemned by a number of people. Certainly on all the Facebook pages and things like that. But the question really then is, what can the city do about it? Uh, and there's not a lot because, uh, as Tad indicated, you cannot, uh, legislate based upon thought. You cannot legislate based upon, uh, somebody's association. This is the one thing, this is where the activism part gets in it because it's where you spend your dollars that ultimately matters to those businesses. And if you don't like that behavior, then that shouldn't be where you're spending your dollars and you need to be aware of such things. You know, so that's, uh, at least one of the things that the city can, uh, that individuals who are elected officials in the city can do, uh, and support those activists that are trying to make a change, that are trying to direct the community support, uh, against racism and again, and be anti-racist about it.
Thank you. I'm gonna offer this question up to, uh, Priscilla Vargas, Matt Mahoney, who's not answered it yet.
Sure. I just believe this isn't a pie where you split it up and people only get a slice. There's room for everybody in this community. We need to understand each other. We need to communicate with each other. I think one of the best ways, and as Harry said, he, he called out the elephant in the, the elephant in the room is we have a couple of businesses with issues, um, with racial declaration. And it's problematic in this community and I choose not to, not to support those businesses as a personal thing, and that's what we can do. But the bigger thing is breaking down the barriers between each other. Who engages with their neighbor that might be different? Who reaches out to the high school coach and tries to find, find a relationship with him and build a friendship to bring, um, young, young, young students, especially of color into the community. You know, those kind of things where you can break barriers. It's everybody's responsibility. It's not just city council. And it starts one by one relationships. Now, we can lead by example and I personally feel like I have. But, uh, it takes, it, it takes a village, as Hillary Clinton said, but it takes each and every one of us. You know, I, I've, I've lived my life where people are individuals and they either wanna do, they wanna bring good to society or they wanna harm it. And I'm gonna engage it with everybody that brings good into society. And then I wanna find a way either to make those that wanna harm society be something positive. If they don't, then well, I have an issue. But in this particular case, it's about each and every one of our responsibility. A lot of people like to just put it on a politician. But the truth is, it's, is it, is if we all did just a little bit, the sum gain is far greater than just one person can do. But I'll lead by example is what I say.
Thank you.
I would, I, I really echo what, what Matt has said. Uh, I think it's so important to break down those barriers and I also agree with and echo what Tad had said about the city does not discriminate. Uh, I, I think that in, in that role, uh, we need to, to really, you know, keep that close to our chest and be, and, and be, uh, proponents of that. We are in a really decisive, um, time in, in, uh, this country. And I, I think that we need to, uh, show more compassion and more, uh, care, uh, and, and, uh, less anger and less frustration with what we're experiencing as it relates to racism. Uh, it's, it's, it's here. It's not something that we can just, you know, ma- you know, wave a wand and it's gonna get all better. But we need to really work together and support each other. Um, and, and that's what's most important is taking, taking everyone for who they are as an individual and, and certainly, uh, just having that respect and that, and like I said, that care for each other and, and not being, um, negative, be positive and, and just listen. Think about being in someone else's shoes. That's, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. So I'm coming up on the end of the advertised time here and I don't wanna make myself that much of a liar that I'm gonna keep you all much, much later into the evening tonight. So again, I wanna say thank you so much to our candidates and their willingness to donate their evening to us tonight. And, uh, let the voters know and the residents of our, uh, uh, community know what their target issues are, what their first priorities are. I really appreciate it. I wanna thank Jamie Quinn Wagner, who I told, uh, her that I wouldn't say that she's the queen of everything today. I really appreciate it. I want to thank Jamie Quinn Wagner, who I told her that I wouldn't say that she's the queen of everything today, but today you are the queen of everything. Thank you for being our lobby keeper, our usher, our timekeeper, our tech support. And all of those great things. Thank you so much. I would not have even come close to pulling this off without you, Jamie. So I really, really, really appreciate it. I want to say thanks to Scott Schaefer from the Waterline Blog, who will be posting this recording of this online for others to view. We also had suggestions come in from past candidate organizers and help with ideas, including Harry Steinmetz, including Sheila Brush and Steve Edmundson. So I want to say thank you to them as well. I really know and I feel like you all have have are feeling this, but please vote. It is something so important and something that we take for granted so much here that I really thankful in a lot of ways that we have the opportunity to participate in our government, our democracy. Ballots are coming out this week and if you're not registered to vote or you have children who just turned 18, there's still time to go online and to fill out, or if you've moved recently, to fill out that registration form. You can even walk up to some places, including the voters' information table at King County up until November 2nd. Thank you very much for being here. It was like fulfilling my dream of becoming the next host of Jeopardy. I really was sad when they didn't call me for that and best of luck to all of those folks. And maybe someday I'll be up there and say, please respond in the form of a question. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. Take care and we will see each other later.